It is now seven eleven. And the open session is reconvening, and I would like to apologize for the delay. Mohamed, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, no action was taken.
We'll start with the pledge. We have a full meeting tonight, but first let's have J. Hugh, Middle School, sixth grade student, Justin Murrow, lead us in the pledge.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Justin. Good job. We will be pulling item ten-one from the agenda.
Also, Board President, I'd like to make a motion that we switch C to B before B and B after C. We've got some students here that might have some homework to do. I don't know. We have very many for...
Is there any objections to that? We okay with that?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Then we're gonna move, we're gonna exchange B and C. With that in mind, then, Micah, would you like to lead us with the DSAC presentations?
We have Gio Ayala of Eisenhower High School up first.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Board members, Acting Superintendent Mr. Islam, Cabinet members, and viewing audience. My name is Gio Ayala, and I am the ASB president at Eisenhower High School, and I am proud to be here. Last week, we hosted King's Week where we celebrated our football team in their quest to become CBL champions. We finished our week with the Kings Ball Dance, Sadie Hawkins. I am proud to announce that our football team won both the CBL championship and a playoff bid. Our team plays this Friday at 7:00 PM at home versus the Santiago Sharks. This week, we have a noontime activity and a tailguit plan to support our team. Last week, we also supported our team for senior night. Cheer, band, and our varsity team joined together to make the last game for our senior special and memorable. Today, our Career Center hosted a college and career fair that had over thirty colleges in attendance. We are proud of our students for exploring their options that come right after high school. Thank you and good night.
Next, we have Imani Hill from Myler High School.
Good evening, Honorable Board of Education, Acting Superintendent Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Imani Hill, and I am a student at Myler High School. We had our first quarter awards assembly and honored students for outstanding academics, achievement, and attitude. We made and wore pink ribbons for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For Red Ribbon Week, we had a school-wide door decorating contest with the winning class getting a pizza party. We have been making and sending cards to the children at Loma Linda University Hospital. We will begin making bead bracelets to raise money for the Beeding to Beat Autism Organization. Today, at the DSAC meeting, we had the honor of meeting the mayor of Rialto and were able to ask questions of her. We also enjoyed meeting Mr. Ayala and his wife. We were then asked to talk about the things we are thankful for. As the Thanksgiving holiday approaches, think about the things and people you are thankful for and let them know. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday.
Next, we have Yolanda Magaña from Rialto High School.
Good evening, Honorable Board, Acting Superintendent Mr. Islam, and viewing audience. My name is Kenya Staley, and I am the senior class president at Carter High School. The month of November has been spectacular thus far at Carter High School. This past weekend, we had our homecoming dance and game. The theme was "The Great Gatsby." The dance was roaring and raging just like the 1920s were. Needless to say, we broke our school dance record attendance with almost five hundred students attending. What a way to start off the month. This Friday, the Carter Lions Football Team will be heading off to Moreno Valley to start off playoffs. I hope to see you all there cheering on the Lions as they take on their opposing team. Thank you and good night.
Next, we have the Kiwanis Monthly Top Scholars.
Presented by our clerk, Joseph Martinez.
And Joanne Gilbert.
Good evening, one and all. We are always proud of our students, and this month, it's a special thing that may be a one-time event because of coordination. These are October students, and do we have a rep from, here he comes. Okay, here he comes, from Congressman Gary Miller's office. If you would please introduce yourself.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Joe Martinez. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me. Thank you for having here. My name is Renee Cespedes. I'm with the Office of Congressman Gary Miller, who represents the 31st Congressional District. I'm pleased and happy to be here with you this evening to recognize the Students of the Month by both the East Rialto-Kiwanis Clubs and Rialto-Kiwanis Club. And on behalf of Congressman Miller, I would like to present the first Student of the Month, Alberto Macias from Eisenhower High School.
Ms. Guadalupe Nunez from Eisenhower High School as well.
And from the Carter High School, Malik Boyd. Malik, sorry.
And from the Carter High School, Monique Gents.
From the Carter High School, Elise De La Rosa.
Correction, she is from Rialto High School.
Can we please have Mr. Ayala in the picture?
And our last certificate goes out to Jorge Mesa from Rialto High School.
In the interest of time, I will read these, but students, stay available, please. And Renee from Cespedes, from Congressman Miller's office, will get that one reprinted. Thank you, sir. Okay, Elise De La Rosa, Rialto High School, please. Student of the Month for Rialto-Kiwanis Club. Would you have one more from Rialto High School and the Kiwanis Club? Jorge Mesa, please join me.
The East Rialto-Kiwanis Club services Eisenhower High School and Carter High School. So it's my pleasure to present Certificates of the Month from East Rialto-Kiwanis Club, which meets every Wednesday morning at Carol's Restaurant at 7:00 AM. And the Carter High School Student of the Month is Monique Gents. Is she here? Monique? And I know Malik Boyd is here from Carter High School. Did they get it wrong? No, I didn't call Eisenhower yet. Mrs. Sparks, we're gonna get with...
I'm ready to go.
Okay. Guadalupe Nunez from Carter, I mean, from Eisenhower High School. Now you got me confused. And Alberto Macias from Eisenhower High School. Did Malik, did he leave? Come on. Did he leave? Oh, I'm sorry. You thought he was done. Okay. You're welcome. Are you his dad?
I'm his dad.
And we will mail Monique's certificate to her. Thank you.
Next, we have a red ribbon presentation, which will be followed by the Parents Summit, and I will be presenting both of those. There's a lot to read here. I'm gonna try to paraphrase some of this. Red ribbon, what it stands for. Go through the history of it, but here in Rialto, we don't want to take hope away from our children, and that's what drugs and cartels do. If you've ever seen any documentaries and what happens in our neighboring countries, when the kids give up and there's no hope, what do they turn to? Whatever anybody will offer them. And those are real sad stories. And I can tell you firsthand, as a LA County teacher, that I experienced some of those traumatic problems with some of my students. They showed me the atrocities on their cell phones, and they knew some of the people there. And you sit there sometimes, and you say, how important is law enforcement? They can be your friend, but all of us, not all of us, but some of us, when you see the lights behind you, we think otherwise.
Correction, she is from Rialto High School.
And our last certificate goes out to Jorge Mesa from Rialto High School.
In the interest of time, I will read these, but students, stay, stay available, please. And Renee from Cespedes, from Congressman Miller's office, will get that one reprinted. Thank you, sir. Okay, Elise De La Rosa, Rialto High School, please. Student of the Month for Rialto Kiwanis Club. We do have one more from Rialto High School and the Kiwanis Club, Jorge Mesa, please join me.
The East Rialto Kiwanis Club services Eisenhower High School and Carter High School. So it's my pleasure to present Certificates of the Month from East Rialto Kiwanis Club, which meets every Wednesday morning at Carol's Restaurant at 7:00 a.m. And the Carter High School Student of the Month is Monique Gents, is she here? Monique? And I know Malik Boyd is here from Carter High School. Where is he? He was here. Did they get it wrong?
No, this is Eisenhower.
No, I didn't call Eisenhower yet. Mrs. Sparks, we're gonna get with-
I'm ready to go.
Okay. Guadalupe Nunez from Carter, I mean, from Eisenhower High School, now you got me confused. And Alberto Macias from Eisenhower High School. Did Malik, did he leave? Come on. Did he leave?
He was in the car.
Oh, I'm sorry, you thought he was done, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are you his dad?
I'm his dad.
All right, well. And we will mail Monique's certificate to her, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Next, we have a red ribbon presentation, which will be followed by the Parents Summit, and I will be presenting both of those. There's a lot to read here, I'm gonna try to paraphrase some of this. Red ribbon, what it stands for, go through the history of it, but here in Rialto, we don't want to take hope away from our children. And that's what drugs and cartels do. If you've ever seen any documentaries and what happens in our neighboring countries, when the kids give up and there's no hope, what do they turn to? Whatever anybody will offer them. And those are real sad stories. And I can tell you firsthand, as a LA County teacher, that I experienced some of those traumatic problems with some of my students. They showed me the atrocities on their cellphones, and they knew some of the people there. And you sit there sometimes and you say, how important is law enforcement? They can be your friend, but all of us, not all of us, but some of us, when you see the lights behind you, we think otherwise. But law enforcement, without law enforcement, and without rules, and without regulation, you have the wild, wild west, you have chaos, you have bullies taking over, which has happened in some of the border towns. So we had this person named Enrique Kiki Camarena, drug enforcement officer, who took the lead, and in doing so, he lost his life. And so we paid tribute to this hero in helping us take care of our children. And so we honor him and those who help us support our children by setting good examples, not bad examples, with one of the events called Red Ribbon. And so, I want to read off a few schools here who deserve accolades for winning a contest. We're going on its ninth year, the Rialto Unified School District's Schoolwide Decoration Contest was held on October 30th. The theme this year is a healthy me, is a drug-free. The 12-panel Rialto Unified School District judges this year consisted of city, police, and fire department leaders, and members of the local press. They selected first, second, and third-place school winners. Judging was based on the categories of creativity, clarity of the message, and visibility. Tonight is my honor to award the trophy, as our Acting Superintendent, Mr. Mohammed Islam, distributes the school checks. Starting with third-place trophy and a check for $500, let's give it up to Garcia Elementary. And the principal, Ramona Rodriguez, are you here? She will be accepting the check.
Which trophy is it up here?
Which one says third place?
Good job.
Ramona?
Next, we have second-place trophy. It was a tie between Hugh Banks Elementary and Warner Elementary Schools. Let's give it up to both schools. Each school will receive a check for $750. We need Cheryl Lynn Scott from principal, and from Hugh Banks Elementary Principal, Dr. Monty Stewart. Where's Monty?
Mr. Stewart, it's a live broadcast.
Want to give this to the principals? Congratulations.
Everyone, everyone.
Congratulations.
We need to see the checks, there's another check, right?
There's a check there.
We'll take one step back.
I may get a little bit closer, show us your trophies and your big smile. We will email you all, we'll email your principals the pictures, so don't worry about the idols. Big smile, let's see the trophies.
That's perfect, okay, one, two, there's one more, big smile, one, two, three.
I may add, I went on the tour, all the schools look nice, they're all winners. Fortunately, you have to make a decision and pick one or two or three. But we do have a first-place trophy and a check for $1,000. And this is giving to the defending Red Ribbon Week champion, J. Hugh Middle School. Come on up, Armando Artiaga, principal, and the J. Hugh family.
Congratulations.
Another big round of applause for all the schools, all the parents, all the hard work.
Good job.
Next, we have the Parent Summit. On Saturday, October 12th, 2013, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m., the Rialto Unified School District held its fifth annual Parent Summit at Carter High School. And I may add, I don't know of any other school districts that are doing this. And that's a proud moment to say, on behalf of Rialto Unified School District. It's huge. Each year, thousands of parents, students, and staff, and the community leaders attend the annual summit, which provides knowledge to parents and guardians by trained educators on topics ranging from college enrollment to general K-12 student information. Various educational workshops, informational booths, and school spirit dominates the day dedicated to unity. This year, the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Committee asked if there could be an incentive for the schools which registered the most parents at the Parent Summit. Rialto Unified School District Acting Superintendent Mohammed Islam committed a check for $1,000 for each elementary, middle, and high school that demonstrated the most parent participation through the registration. Tonight, we honor the three top schools which registered and brought the most parents to the Parent Summit last month. The first school, let's give it up to Fitzgerald Elementary School. Come on down. Fitz, Principal Linda Minor, to collect your $1,000. You know, the money will go quick, but the memories will last. And when you think about, when you have unity with parents, you have the students, and you have the staff, you have like a three-legged stool. And Mr. Winton used to bring that up all the time. He said, you take one leg away, you can't sit anymore, you fall down. So you think about that, and that's where our strength comes from, checks and balances. Next, we have the second school, is Rialto Middle School. So accepting will be Principal Rhea McGyver. The third school is Rialto High School. Please come on down, Mr. Arnie Ayala, principal of Rialto High School.
Get on the other side, so that it looks- Step back a little bit, guys, and then on the other side, perfect. We want to make sure that we get everybody in the picture, so get a little bit closer, like you all like each other. More from Rialto? Okay, count four. Okay, we're gonna count to three, big smile, one, two. One, two.
Okay, and then right over here, right over here, one, one.
Everybody say, "Rialto."
One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three.
Congratulations, Arnie.
Congratulations.
I'll just bring a little closure and thank everybody again for all the hard work and participation. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into these two programs. Thanks again, on behalf of the board, staff, and the cabinet. Next, we have comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes to make a presentation. Mr. Islam?
Gabriela Madrid.
Good evening, board members, representatives, and everyone here present. My name is Gabriela Madrid, I am 17 years old, and I recently graduated from Carter High School. As you can see, I'm not a parent, but I am here to represent Warner's Parent Center. Since they gave me the time and opportunity to work together with other moms instead of staying home, waiting for the month of January to start college. I got involved a lot in helping teachers, as well as the Parent Center. They taught me how to work as a team and how a Parent Center works for the well-being of the school. The Parent Center is something positive for kids, and here is a proof. Something that started as a simple talk, cooperation, and support, we were able to obtain second place. Thank you, parents, for letting me participate, and thank you, Ms. Scott, for all the support to the Parent Center.
Next person is Joanna Uribe.
Good afternoon, my name is Joanna Uribe, and on this day, I'm proudly here representing Warner Parent Center. We are very happy for this achievement, we've only opened the Parent Center for two months, and we started off with a right foot. The Parent Center was opened with only five parents, and the support of our principal, Mrs. Scott. And today, we count with a little over 30 parents who have donated their time, effort, and hard work. We achieved this share of second place, that for us, is like having first place. As it is the first year that Warner competes with other schools. The Parent Center was open with one purpose, of bringing good and positive things for our school. Thanks to all of our parent volunteers, and thanks to our teachers and Principal Mrs. Scott for her trust. We are working together for the welfare of our school. This award will be used for all of our students at Warner. Thank you so much.
Next person is Socorro Hernandez.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, distinguished board members. The primary reason that I'm here tonight, primarily because I have a grandson that attends in high school, and among the rest of the students in the school. And I understand there are some problems within our superintendent. The primary reason that I'm concerned is because I realize too well that the well-being of the children, and especially the ROTC members that are working so hard to try to achieve a goal and understand their lives as they progress, is very important. And I understand that the superintendent is being a very devoted and dedicated person for the benefit of the school, as well as the students. And I, I feel personally, very strongly that before a decision is made to terminate this man, be sure that it's done right, and don't do any imperfection of human justice in removing him when he's trying to help the school and the students. Because this is gonna affect not only the students, not only the school, but it's gonna affect the parents as well, and that's gonna create a hardship on everyone. I respectfully request, and I trust sincerely, that you more, both members will try to take it in serious consideration before you're making a final decision that you might later regret, and the school might regret, and the children will suffer. We do not want that, because we want our children to, to try to learn, not to be discouraged, to try to progress in life and become the best they can be. And we are here to help them, to guide them, and to teach them, and that's our responsibility. So let's not, let's not turn our backs on them, and let's give them the best education we can at the best time for, for all their lives to come, because they'll never forget this. 50 years from now, they'll remember you, like I remember my third-grade teacher, that's been 60 years ago, they will remember you. So be the best you can, and do it for the benefit of everyone concerned. Thank you very kindly.
The next person is Lydia Smith.
Good evening. Well, I know that the superintendents has problems, we all make mistakes and things like that, but before you do make a decision, I highly suggest that we need a change. I have been wanting to get the superintendent's attention for a long time, four years, going on five years. And so far, Mr. Mohammed has done a great job attending me and other parents. I'm here on the behalf of other parents besides myself. I strongly suggest that you do make a right decision. We need a change, is what I feel, a big change, for the future of our children. And our children already have been suffering. And with a role model like that, we need somebody more stronger. I see Mr. Mohammed in his eyes that he is strong, he has a lot of patience, he is attentive to all the parents. And I haven't got that kind of treatment in four and a half years. We need somebody that is gonna do the job. And I really suggest that Mr. Mohammed should stay here. Thank you.
The next person is Dr. John Cas lunus. He marked both item not on agenda and item on agenda.
Good evening, my name is Dr. John Cas lunus, and if you notice the building, it's named after me. So I hope- So I hope you all clean your shoes before you came in here. We don't want all mud all over this rug. I come here with a heavy heart, because the functions that were on before me were happy and good for the kids. What I'm gonna talk about is not. I don't agree with the last people that say Mohammed is great, because he is not. Mohammed is a pain in the neck. I wanted to discuss a letter I got from him this week saying I owe this district thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars in health benefits. Okay, I don't owe that. If he knew the rules, every...I retired in 2007. Every year from 2007 to now, I called Social Security and I called Kaiser, and I was covered. The district covered my health care, so I didn't even have to go into Medicare. I did not have to go into Medicare, but they put me in it anyway, and I paid the bills. So I'm not dying about that. What I'm saying is, I know you can't answer me, but I'm requesting a special meeting with the Board, open, open, an open meeting, not in a back room, and I request all the papers regarding my health benefits, and I request all the papers supposedly when I asked for a job here. I did wanna come back here and work. I do have trouble with Mohammed with the acting superintendent bit. All the problems in the district coming out of his shop, all the fiscal problems, all the robbery and everything is coming out of that shop. So I don't understand why you make him in charge in the investigations, because if he's in charge in investigations, it's just like you're leaving the fox in the hen house. He's acting all right, and he isn't gonna get an Academy Award for it. You could've picked somebody who was not got the problems like Dr. Levine there. She would've been all different. Her people aren't involved in this investigation. You've got Seaburn hanging out there. You've got me with this here darn old letter saying I owe the district money, and it's not true. But he called me in and accused me of being a thief, a thief. Then he sends me a letter saying, according, as you may recall, you signed up for so-and-so. Yeah, I did sign up for so-and-so, and everything was legal. Okay, I see the time is gone. I know, I know, I've been here. But the bottom line is, I would like to have a special meeting, open, so some of the people can get to it. You know, I admire the girls and stuff, and I admire some of you people, but we gotta have some open communication, period.
None, and I am not on agenda.
Okay. So next, we have any person wishing to speak on any item on the agenda will be granted three minutes.
Paul Wilson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Rialto Unified School District and Board Members. My name is Paul Wilson. I live at 546 North Marvin Drive. I'm a homeowner for forty years in this area. I have a grandson who attends Eisenhower High School. He's in ROTC. This is his senior year. I'm very happy with, as a grandparent, watching my grandson grow into a young man at that age. It's a very difficult time for young people anywhere. I'm here to speak regarding the superintendent who is now on leave. I've been informed that the ROTC...I talk a lot enough of people...oh, I'm sorry. I've been informed that the ROTC, which I am...that program helped me with my grandson. I'm a Marine. I believe in that way of life. We need it, our young people need it. That program was very beneficial for my grandson. The kids that I see in that program over these last couple of years, I've been informed that the superintendent, who is now on leave, felt very highly about that program. Being somewhat selfish, I'd like to see other kids, other young men and women, have that same type of, what can I say, support. Our young people need, at the highest level, support, because it makes those people, it helps those people who are helping them feel like they're supported. I'm not very good on this stuff here, but I'd like to see, as a doctor who just left us, say, let's open it up so that it can be open. And I'm gonna use this last couple of seconds, I suppose. In today's society, we have allegations being made proof, okay? Our young people are drifting toward, if I allege something, then it is a fact. I think the facts should be made...we should all be made aware of the facts in this situation, and then whatever feelings anyone has will be supported by fact, not supposition. So I'd like to see our former superintendent, who are now on leave, at least be given a chance to return. I don't know the process. That's for you guys up here, but I really would. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Next, Russell Silva.
Good evening, Board members, administration, and viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva, and I'm a Rialto resident. I noticed that Resolution thirteen dash fourteen dash twenty-four for the Fairfield Field Turf USA dispute claim is back on the agenda again. In the October twenty-third meeting, it was stated that the San Bernardino County Board Superintendent of Schools, District of Facility Services, the DFS, was unable to process any payments for this because NEF Construction, the general manager, or the general contractor and Field Turf, the subcontractor, did not comply with the requirements of the California multiple awards schedule, which is called the CMAS. And these requirements were that they were not to go over ten percent in change orders, and they were, and all subcontractors were to provide their own performance bonds. It was explained by the district staff at that time that because the work was already completed, that without this resolution, the DFS could not approve any payments for the contract because of the bonding issues. So I think that that's important, that that needs to be done. And as for the labor issues of cost, for the additional cost, I did agree with Acting Superintendent, Mr. Islam, that we did need further investigation to determine what caused this overage, and to see that because it obviously exceeded the ten percent, was it an error, an oversight on the part of the contractor or on the part of the district? We need to figure that out. But the bigger question to me, when I was listening to the minutes again and reviewing everything, why would the district even consider purchasing materials that they knew needed to be installed when in fact they didn't even check to make sure that the labor was included? It's like as if you were to go out and buy lumber and materials for a house and then be surprised that a contractor was gonna charge you more money to build it. So my question is, was there sufficient enough information, Mr. Islam, to determine whether where all these excess costs came from? Because according to action item K two dash one, the Board is going to approve payment for the contract of the one point four million dollars, but what happened to the two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in excess fees? Is this an issue that's just tabled for now and is gonna come back and be resolved in another future meeting? Or is Field Turf going to reissue another claim against this for the additional costs? The district is...if the district is responsible for this, then I believe they have to pay it, but are they going to adjust the budget out of the Measure Y funds so that it doesn't come out of the general funds to the reserves? And just as a side note, I'm in favor of Mr. Islam. I'm sorry you pulled item K ten dash one. I don't know the reason why, but I was in favor of him receiving the funds. Thank you.
Yes, all.
Next, we have a public hearing, which is none. It's a little bit confusing, because it seems like we just had a public hearing, but that's the way it's labeled. Next, we have the consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education, members, or Acting Superintendent for individual action. Do I have a motion to accept E through J?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Martinez, do we have a second?
I'll have a second, but I have some questions.
Fine. We have any pulls?
Well, yes, I also had G fourteen and H two.
Okay, G fourteen.
And I have...
H two.
I have G six, seven, nine...
Six, seven...
Ten and fifteen.
Six, seven, nine, and what was the other one, thirteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Yes.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote if we don't have any other pulls. Let's go ahead and vote on G one, two, three, four, five, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. And... H one, three, four. And I, one, two, three, four. And J, one through three. Do we have a second? We have a sec...we have a first, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a five oh on those items. Next, we open up our discussion. G six.
G six, seven, nine, and ten and fifteen are all together, in the sense that all of these, and I have no problem with our students going, doing Christmas break on tournaments and whatever. That's great. That's wonderful. But when I look at how they worded their request, there was, and we are also worried about accountability and everything, there was no mention of how these funds were going to be budgeted for these students. I know it says, when you read, they all read the same. If we look at G six, six point one, G six point one, and seven, at the bottom of it, it states that they...these boys' basketball tournament is in Westlake, California on December twenty-sixth through thirty, two thousand thirteen, to be paid by site athletic funds at no cost to the district. But how do they budget? Well, how do we know how much is budgeted for this that comes out of athletic funds?
It's typically the ASB athletic funds, and they fundraise.
I know, but don't they budget? How much is it gonna really cost?
Quantity, quantity amount.
Yes, because when you go back to, just going back to G four point one and five point one, this is just a comparison. When the, I think it's the French club and the Travelers Abroad Club are going to a European trip into Costa Rica, they budgeted how much it's going to cost for each student, even though it's no cost to the district. So we're talking about accountability, but when, and ASB funds, we don't know how much of this is really gonna be budgeted out of these funds for these trips.
Is there some reason they were submitted that way and not as the others were with a not to exceed number?
I'll refer this to Dr. Levine.
Yes, in the past, we haven't put a number, but we can begin to do that whenever there's a trip with the overnight sports. We haven't put numbers, but we'll be happy to do that.
Well, we did with some of them.
I wish we would, because...
With the athletic trips?
No, these are athletic trips.
Not with the athletic trips.
But I think they all should be the same, because when you're...the funds are in the school district, the particular site budget. We don't have any idea how much money is being accounted for those particular trips, and we wanna be transparent and open about how money is spent, and maybe an estimated cost of what it would be for these students to go on these trips should be in their request.
Mr. Islam, we have no problem asking the sites to do that.
Yeah, we'll do that, but the Board is uncomfortable approving this tonight, but as I'm looking at the event, I think we should be okay to pull and return back with the cost.
We're happy to do that.
We can pull these items and return on the next agenda.
Okay, as long as it won't inhibit them from going, right?
I want them to go. That's not the problem, is that we need to have some accountability of what it's costing each site to do these events, so that there will be accountability.
They say that transportation will be provided by district vans, tournament fees will be paid by site athletic funds, hotel accommodations and meals will be provided by the tournament directors and participating venues, but it still doesn't give us a total cost out of whatever money that it's gonna cost for them to take the trip, and they should be doing that.
I think we're okay with the timeline as you look at the date of those events.
They're during the Christmas break.
During the Christmas break, our next board is December eleventh. I think we will make sure that we do not cancel the trip.
Okay.
We'll make sure the student does go those trips, and we'll bring the item back to agenda.
Bring it back, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Next, we have item fourteen, I believe.
Yes, and this is the one about Eisenhower receiving the Toshiba grant for twelve thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars. So I just wanted to say how proud I am that Eisenhower received this grant. It is to be used in the Science Department to implement inquiry learning, and it's a sizable grant that they can do a lot with. I think it's fantastic. I also wanted to know, Mr. Sparks, do we know who wrote the grant? Lance Atkinson? Okay, well, he needs to be commended for securing this grant for Eisenhower, and congratulations to Eisenhower.
Okay, very good. Next, we have H two.
Yes. There were two contracts for Design West Engineering, and I read the little blurb on it that they provide in the agenda, but I'm not really quite sure, again, what these...what exactly are these contracts for? There's two of them. What sites will be visited? It refers to site visitations, and it looks like the money being approved is just for the visits and not for any actual work. So can someone tell me what we're doing on these contracts?
Yes, Iris Chu, our Director of Facilities, could you please speak to the Board and clarify this?
Board member and President, I'm Iris Chu, Facility Planning Director. I'd like to explain to you the contract, what's the contract about. One is for the service of computer labs. We have established computer lab, we will establish computer lab in each school to comply with the common core requirements, and to do computer lab, we need to make sure the electrical capacity is there to fire up all forty computers. Therefore, we... Therefore, we need electrical engineer to check each computer lab, make sure that we have the right amount of power plug and the right amount of panel spell circuit for that purpose. And that's one of them. And the other one is to, is for the Prop 39 project, as you are aware that we receive, we will receive $1.3 million every year for the next five years to improve the energy performance of the district sites. And there are string attached to this funding that is we need to provide study of current consumption level and the design and to estimate the future consumption level to demonstrate evidence that we can reduce the energy consumption and have energy utility savings. So, that require a lot of intensive data analysis and study. Therefore, we need engineer who specialize not only the power, but also the mechanical analysis to help us to perform these analysis. And for that purpose, they will visit the site that currently use the most energy per square foot.
Okay. On the one that's being paid for out of Common Core funds, is that price just the assessment or does it include any actual work that may need to be done?
Yes, they will do assessment of the existing classrooms and make sure that it's, it will have, either it will, it is, it is available for, to be used as computer lab, or it will be engineered and designed for the computer lab. So, it's not only site visit, they will give assessment, engineering input, and we put their engineering input, including perhaps adding the sub panels to existing panel and put it together a specification, and we take this as part of the big document, take out to bid.
My thought is that it's maybe more feasible and more productive to invest in the little laptop carts that can just be moved from room to room instead of spending all this money on computer labs and all the engineering and that type of thing. I mean, I'm kind of confused here.
I cannot answer to that question. That's a technology-related question. I need to have technology staff to help me with that.
Okay. Well, I had another question on the R.F. Hawkins contract, which is probably yours also. Am I correct? This is to provide electrical and mechanical engineering services for the Information Technology Department tenant improvement at the, I don't understand what we mean by tenant improvement at the District Registration Center, which I thought was closed down, but...
Yes, this is because there, there's a limited space where they are located now. The IT staff is now very dispersed into different places in the district. Therefore, the idea is to consolidate one spot where everybody's, will be stationed in one space. This is for department. And so, we decide to relocate the office for IT people to the old Registration Center.
Okay.
And we have to modify the space, make sure we have the electrical right and the air conditioning right, and do some demolition, minor demolition and reconstruction to, for the department.
Okay, thank you.
The plan is, again, relocate our Technology Department into a central operations and prepare them to move into DRC, which is currently underutilized. There's plenty of space there. Right now, they're operating in different locations. So, bring everybody in a central location so our technology will be effectively operating.
I just didn't understand the wording of it.
Yes.
And that's something that the district leadership's been contemplating, discussing for a while now, so that's good that it's finally manifesting.
And I would just like to point out, although the idea of a computer lab, I know some of our schools do not even have them, at every school is awesome, but when you're talking about doing testing and you have to test massive amounts of students, one computer lab is only going to handle a minimal number of kids. So, I certainly hope we are also looking at investing in some of the laptop carts that can, that are mobile and can, we can buy more of them and service more kids that way. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we didn't vote on G-14, which is comments, and also H-2. Perhaps we can combine both. And can I get a motion to accept? G-14 and H-2 together.
So moved.
Second.
Kelly and Mr. Martinez, okay. Can I get a vote by board members?
Aye.
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 5-0. Okay. Next, we have discussion action items. Action items will be enacted in one motion unless members of the Board of Education request specific items to be discussed. We are voting to approve action items K-1 through K-12. Do I have a motion to accept?
And we pulled number 10 until next meeting, right?
10, 10.1, 10.1.
K-10.
Yes.
So moved, as amended.
Okay. And do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I need to pull 1, 2, and 7.
Any other pulls? Okay, let's go ahead and vote on K-3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 9, and 11. We have a motion, we have a second. Vote by board members?
Aye.
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 5-0. Okay, next, we go with our discussion, K-1.
Okay, I have some questions about the Common Core Plan. The first one, I guess these would be for Dr. Levine. How does the plan specifically address increasing the number of students who are taking A to G required courses in high school? Is there, are we putting specific measures in there to make sure that we are increasing that number because it's not very high?
That is not part of the Common Core Plan. But it is part of the goals of, that will be forthcoming to the Board of the Educational Services Department to make our students college and career-ready under the Common Core. So, we do not have a high enough number of students completing A through G classes, and that's something that will be, we're in the process of analyzing, and as part of the LCFF Plan, the L, the plan for it, the LCAP, Local Control...
Right.
The Accountability Plan, that will be included in there.
Okay. The second one was, what data was the plan based on to determine the academic needs for our students to meet the Common Core standards? What data did you all look at?
We looked at a large variety of data. We looked at CELT scores, we looked at AYPs, we looked at APIs, we looked at benchmarks, we looked at grade, what we call dashboards, where we look at the amount of students whose grades are Ds and Fs. So, we looked at all that before we picked the focus areas and wrote the goals.
Okay, good. What is the evaluation criteria or the plan to measure the effectiveness of the plan and the utilization of the Common Core funds?
Okay, at, in each objective, you'll see a column that says evidence, and so, we will be looking for that evidence. For example, the step that says determining integrated versus traditional math sequence at secondary. One of the evidence for that will be the minutes from the meetings that the teachers attended for discussion and got information. And so, you know, there's a variety of evidence that we'll be collecting, the assessments, the scores, and everything that can be scored and graded is scanned in to illuminate and is available for all the sites to see as well.
What is the accountability for the district and at the site level to ensure that our instruction improves and meets the rigor of the Common Core standards? How are we going to hold our schools and the district accountable for that?
Well, accountability is exactly, Ms. O'Kelly, the word that we have to do to make sure that this happens. And so, it'll be the job of everyone in the district, and you know, goes from the board to the cabinet, to the sites. Every site has a supervisor, and so, it'll be the supervisor's job, you know, the director that's over the school to make sure that this all rolls out appropriately and that we have checks and balances in place within the department and under the leadership of the acting superintendent.
Because that's a very key issue.
Yes.
If we're going to do this successfully.
And we feel that it's, our department feels it's a piece that needs to be, to be implemented more strenuously in the district.
Yes, I agree. Okay.
I'd like to point something out on that topic. It's a board's accountability as well to the county. We will be removed if we don't start paying attention to students more instead of all this other distraction. So, you know, whether we like it or not, we have to pay attention to students first.
And Ms. O'Kelly, we're happy to bring presentations at any time to the board, you know, to update you about student progress. We're happy to do that.
Okay, and I'd just like to add, it is always about students first, but we also have to take care of the business in the district, so. I was a little concerned, concerned, concerned to hear that the CINC solution program, which the board majority purchased, I think it was back in August, is still not being utilized. And we paid $120,000 for the first year of this program, and we're halfway through the year, and it's, according to my information, it still hasn't been implemented. The other thing that disturbs me about this is that virtually everything that the CINC solution offers was already available in our illuminate program, which was already paid for. So, but this item was approved because it was time-sensitive. And in my opinion, the phrase "time-sensitive" has no place at a board meeting. If you, if we are approving things because they are time-sensitive without having all the information we need and all the research done to approve them, then we're not doing our job as board members. So, I feel that everything on the agenda must be submitted anticipating that a board member may pull it and want more information. So, we need to have plenty of time so we're not put in that high-pressure spot of it's time-sensitive. It needs to be approved ahead of time so that we can make an informed decision instead of an uninformed decision. And this particular item on the CINC solution was obviously not time-sensitive since we are still not even using it. So, that was just an example of that. But is, Dr. Levine, is there some reason why we're not using it?
We're not using it because we have not completed all the work to get it in place. It is a process, and so, we're beginning the process. I'm not sure we could have moved any quicker on it because we're still getting our teams together, but it won't be in place as the curriculum this year because this is our transition year, and that's why we're implementing the CINC solution. So, the work will be done before the summer, will be up and running. Teachers will know their scope and sequence and their materials, and if they care, if they wish, to do some planning over the summer, or maybe some of the schools will have teachers come in and work on teams, that'll be possible. But the intent was not to actually have the scope and sequence this year, it was to do the work this year.
But we paid the $120,000 for this school year.
Right, to do the work. But our contract was extended. Our contract was extended until December 31, 2014, because we didn't start when we thought we were going to. So, they've given us the extra time on the contract.
So, if they're not going to have it available to them till summer, we paid for a year, but we're getting about six months.
No, we're, we have certain pieces of it, and it's, like I mentioned, it's a process. So, right now, we're setting up all the IT pieces that have to work with our synergy. It wasn't just sit down and do the work. A lot of stuff had to go on behind the scenes. So, for example, Jim Harper and John Roach have been working with School City to get all the IT pieces in place, and then, once the curriculum is, once that's there, then we can work on the curriculum piece.
And that, we all, from what, my understanding is that we already had virtually everything that's part of the CINC solution, we had on illuminate, which we had already paid for. So, we were kind of like reproducing our efforts.
We did not know that there would be those functions in illuminate at the time, but I can tell you, we're not the only district that's using CINC solution. Chino is using CINC solution, Colton just voted to use CINC solution. So, there's a lot of districts that feel it's going to provide us with a really good scope and sequence and good assessments.
I hope so. Number 2?
K-2.
The, okay, yes, we pulled this item at the last board meeting about the field turf until we had more information. And I'm going to say upfront, I understand we have to pay this money, but these are my concerns. I cannot believe that we did not know what we were getting into. It's saying here that we saved, what, $336,796 by using field turf under the CMAS contract, but because we didn't meet the labor requirement, we're now having to pay out $1.5 million. So, I was a math teacher, that just doesn't sound like a savings to me.
Mrs. O'Kelly, let me be clear to you and to the board, the contract, it was a fixed price.
Right.
Material and labor.
Right.
Using the CMAS contract.
Right.
So, I want to be clear that the amount of the contract to, for the project did not go up.
I totally understand that.
By using the CMAS contract, we, the cost of the project, we saved $336,796.80 by using the CMAS contract. The mistakes we made, and I'm going to be honest with you, our NAF construction, which is somebody's here and sitting in the room, and staff did not know that the, one price, labor and material, which makes 10% of the labor, at that time, we took the fixed amount of the project cost. And we did not know that there's a, there was not a breakdown, it's just total cost of the project. So, when we, the payment was requested and submitted to the county, the bill was, it was breakdown into labor and material. By breaking down that cost, now it exceeds 10%. The law says you cannot exceed 10% of the labor cost.
And why wasn't anybody watching this?
Again, you know, it's simply a mistake.
Because we're way over 10%.
Yes, but it did not exceed the fixed cost of the project. When the break, you're right, we just...
And this comment here, the district staff and NAF construction were unaware of the requirements for direct bonds from field turf, you know, this is accountability.
You're right.
I mean, this is a, I said at the last meeting, this is an extremely expensive lesson to learn, $1.5 million, because somebody didn't research it fully or really know all the facts.
Do you mind if I ask, does someone from NAF construction is here? Maybe he can further clarify. Mr. Smith, Wes is here. Wes is here. Could you please?
Hello, President of the Board, Board Members, and Acting Superintendent Islam. My name is Wes Smiley with NAF Construction. We were contracted as the lease-leaseback contractor for preparing the stadiums to receive the field turf and artificial track. So, the track and field surface itself is not under our contract, but we worked with the district staff in coordinating the selection of the vendor that did provide the field turf and track surface. And that's field turf. And so, any mistake here made was made on our part in not understanding San Bernardino County Council's interpretation of the CMOS requirements. We have worked with school districts throughout Riverside and San Bernardino County, purchasing field turf or related projects, products from other manufacturers, using the CMOS program without any trouble. This particular invoice was looked at by County Council, who took a very narrow, literal interpretation of the CMOS requirements that we had not encountered before. I'm certainly not saying it was an incorrect interpretation. I'm not qualified to comment on that, but it was an interpretation we had not run into before. So, the County Council reviewed the CMOS contract, and because more than 10% of the contract amount was identified as labor, it was her interpretation that CMOS program could not be used to pay that invoice.
It's just up to any person?
I can't comment on that. It was the County Council's interpretation that this particular invoice did not meet the requirements of the CMOS program.
Well.
And, Ms. O'Kelly, this is reviewed by County Legal Council.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I think when we're entering into these multimillion-dollar contracts, we need a legal opinion before we accept them because this is, it's ongoing in this district with amendments and ratifications, and now this thing. Although I understand it's not an increase in the amount of the contract, but it's money another way. And so, somebody needs to look at this stuff before we agree to do it.
I agree. And this is, again, pre-existing under lease-leaseback agreement. Again, this is, the condition is now, we have with the County Council, the review, kind of, when we submit the payment to the County Council, they pull this payment request, they engage, you know, we, as you heard from Mr. Smiley, saying, they have not, we don't agree with this interpretation, but this is a council. You cannot say they're right or wrong, but you have to just go with their opinion, and their decision is, right now, we cannot ask the contractor to produce the bond or reduce the labor cost. It's done. Project is complete.
I know that. I understand that.
So, that's kind of where's the problem. It's not under construction, it's already done.
I just, I get this bad feeling that when it comes to taxpayer money, people like think it's free money, and we don't always get the most, I mean, I understand how the construction business works, because my husband's a contractor. And basically, on his jobs, if he goes in and does the job, and it comes, it winds up costing more than he had estimated and signed a contract for, he has to eat it. We always seem to keep paying out more money to these people.
But.
Even though, not in this case, I'm not saying that. I'm not confused. I'm just making an example.
I agree.
Since I've gotten on the board, we have numerous times amended contracts to our contractors for more money, and so something's wrong. If they can't give us a proper estimate the first time, then maybe we don't need to do business with them.
These are, I call, pre-existing conditions, which you are experiencing difficulties and problems. This contract started a year back, and I agree with the board that we need to do a better job, yes. We should not be experiencing this type of difficulties at the end of the project, be able to pay the bill, and asking board to do a different resolutions. I agree with you.
And to be honest, 1.5 million buys a whole lot of things for our students.
Any other questions on K-2?
Well, I just would like to thank the gentleman here for your honesty and clarification. We are completely satisfied with the work that was completed.
Oh, yes.
They're beautiful. I believe the same gentleman joined us for the tour the other day of the track and fields, both at Rialto and Carter. And it's not, you know, just one person's oversight, you know, it was an oversight on our own behalf as well, well over a year ago. So, it's a lesson learned, and we appreciate you being here today to clarify for us, and we also appreciate Mr. Islam's honesty in admitting that, you know, we, our people should have known better also. So, hopefully, we can move forward and continue to do great things for our school district. But let everyone know that we've got watchful eyes up here, so we want to make sure we're doing everything right, and we got watchful eyes in the audience, so, you know. So, thank you. Thank you again.
And the tracks and fields are beautiful. This was not a statement about the quality of the work at all. It was the other thing. And number seven?
Yeah, K-7.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to point out that these employee incentives that we're being asked to approve, as a principal of a high school, if I wanted to do any employee incentives, I had to either pay out of my own pocket, or I had to use funds such as the Step Up Saturday funds, funds that were separate from the general fund. You cannot, employee incentives cannot be purchased with public funds. That is considered a gift of public funds. So, after getting the information about this item, discovered that the superintendent purchased expensive Nike tennis shoes for several employees who are good friends of his. And there was no criteria. There was no, I mean, an incentive program, usually the person is honored or acknowledged for something. But there was no criteria for this, other than the fact that the superintendent liked the people that he gave them to. One pair that was ordered was ordered for an employee who had already left the district. Now, these were paid for.
Ms. O'Kelly, Mr. President?
Excuse me. He put this order on the district credit card, and when the county reviewed the credit card expenditure, they denied it because it is a gift of public funds. The taxpayers, I know myself as a taxpayer, I don't think my tax dollars should be buying tennis shoes for the superintendent's friends.
Okay, we had a comment here. Mr. Martinez?
I just wanted to point out that the board has become, I guess ingrained with a habit now of pointing at employees when they're not here to, you know, to give the balance, to give their side of it. I don't know whether that's fact or not, or is it hearsay? Have you talked to Seaborn and asked? The difference matters.
We have the recipients right here, and the charge was on his district credit cards.
Have you talked to them and asked them?
Asked them what?
What they received it for? Or are you making assumptions?
This is, I would assume, the list the superintendent provided of who was to receive them?
That's correct.
Yeah.
But did you ask the recipient what it was for? I'm looking for a yes or a no.
The problem is, it doesn't matter, even if there was a reason, you cannot use public funds to purchase gifts for people.
That part I will agree with, but the other part, being able to have a staff member give their side of the story. It could happen to any of our staff members. The way this board is going, I'm very concerned. I've gotten feedback that rank and file are concerned about it.
Well, I just, I just would like to weigh in here for a second. I just, I just would like to say that the information is given to the board, it's on the agenda. It has come to our attention that the board policy was not followed, which is to get authorization from the board before spending taxpayers' money on employee incentives. Since this amount of money, $987, was not approved by the board beforehand, why should we approve it after the fact, when the board policy, the authorization by the board wasn't given in the first place? Whether they were Air Jordans, or whether they were, you know, doesn't matter what kind of shoes they were, Nikes or not, regardless, this money should have been asked permission by the board first for approval, then spent on whatever it was going to be used for, hats, shoes, jackets, whatever. And that's the only issue I have with it. The fact that certain people are not here, that's irrelevant because we're, this is a discussion action item, and it's open for discussion amongst the board. The facts were given to us. Everyone up here already has the information that they need to make a decision. You know, there's no need for us to chop each other down and ask for us to get outside opinions or information, or start interrogating people as to who got the shoes and who didn't get the shoes. The money was spent.
And I'd like to say, I don't think it is in wise or even proper for us to supersede the county who denied this expenditure and approve it.
Lot of good points raised. Are there any other comments on K-7? If there are no comments, then I would make a recommendation that we vote on each one separately. Are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let's start with K-1. Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Okay, so, Kelly, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, vote by vote, vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. It's a 5-0. Okay. Next, we have the adopt resolution, number 1314-24, the field turf. We've already discussed it. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Okay. Gilbert, what is, vote by board members?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. And next, last, we have K-7, authorized payment for items purchased for district employee incentives. Do we have a motion to accept? There's no motion, no second. The resolution dies. Okay. Next, we have comments from the superintendent, Acting Superintendent Mohammed.
Member of the board, I'd like to invite our Director of Communications to make an exciting announcement today. This is historical, something in Rialto Unified, the school district should be proud of, what the board support and the announcement. I'd rather Mrs. Saidah Jeffrey come forward, please, and make that announcement. I call this a news break.
Well, the Rialto Unified School District did make history under the leadership, of course, of the Board of Education, united with the acting superintendent. We are streaming live on the internet, so if you don't, well, yeah. Not that we're telling you not to come to the meetings. We want you to come to the meetings. But in case you're sick, or in case, you know, you just can't get here because there's issues, or you're running late from work, we have to understand that you, as parents, you're our customers, and we want to make sure that we do everything to accommodate that. It did take a while. A lot of it was because of the fact that we had some glitches, we had some money issues. At first, they were telling us $100,000. Then they were telling us $80,000, and then the board members would look at me with that eye. And so, we're doing it for free. And, yeah, absolutely free. It's a system, you have YouTube, this is called Ustream. Now, you do get like a five, 10-minute, five, 10 seconds of an advertiser, and that's okay, car commercials or whatever. And then, we have been streaming all over, but there are some important people that I would like to have the opportunity to thank, if the board and the acting superintendent would allow me to do so. I know I stand up here and I cheerlead a lot, but there's some people here who really work very, very hard. Ricardo Carlos is one person. And this gentleman, this gentleman better come out of hiding. David Call, where are you? I asked him to stay. He has been, we've been just pulling here, saying, this better work. Mr. Call, please come on up.
I'm joining you at the podium.
It's a live board meeting. We're streaming live. David Call from IT. Clay Dickens is also involved. I want to thank Bethan from IT. She allowed us to make sure that we do this. This is a long process, but it's wonderful, and unlike the Obamacare, the ADA, there's no log-out issues. We have no issues. We're live, we're doing okay. And John Steele, who is outside. I want to thank the community so much, and you push me, and I appreciate it, so keep challenging us, and we'll keep rising to the occasion. Rialto Unified School District is now streaming live. Thank you.
Thank you, Saidah. The next item I'd like to announce, we have a talent show tomorrow at Rialto High School. The event going to start 5:00 PM. Please join and give, support our students. Again, it's tomorrow at 5:00 PM at Rialto High School. Everybody's invited. Please be there, give us support, our students, and this is an exciting event for our students, and I'd like to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Next, we have Mica. Would you like to share a few words?
Yes, thank you. I just want to thank you, Mr. President Ayala, and Mr. Islam for joining us earlier at the DSEC meeting. Really enjoyed you guys', your words of encouragement to the children in the DSEC meeting, as well as Mayor Robertson, as she was there as well. Just thank you for your shared experiences and your motivation for leadership in our lives and leading us and teaching us how to like live a wonderful life. I just want to also bring up, thank you, Mr. Islam, for the shirts, and also for the hats. I hope to be receiving soon. Also, at the DSEC meeting, we shared what we were thankful for. It was very interesting to, I don't know, interact with the kids in the DSEC meeting as well as fully understand what we're thankful for, and just be able to socialize with one another at the DSEC meeting, I think. Thank you guys once again, and that's it.
Thank you, Mica. Well said. Next, we have Board Member, Ms. Joanne T. Gilbert.
Okay. Thank you, President Ayala. I just want to take time during this Thanksgiving season to just say thank you to our staff, our teachers, our students, the viewing audience, concerned citizens, and everyone who's been very patient during these past few months, as we have pursued to bring closure to our difficult situation here in the district. When there is an interruption in the normal flow of things, disorder or chaos may occur, and we have seen some of that. Many of our staff have been asked to make changes, and we appreciate the work that they've done, because they had to move from their normal work schedules and even take on additional tasks. And we have continued to operate, and we're still doing great things, like our Parents' Summit, for example, the Red Ribbon Week activities, and Students of the Month. So, we're still carrying on here in Rialto, and I appreciate what you do. It is understandable that sometimes we may feel that the board is not working in a speedy manner, but trust me- in a speedy manner, but trust me, we are. And we are united in getting the job done. We want to be as impartial as we can be in dealing with personnel issues. I appreciate that many of you attend long board meetings and waiting to hear news concerning our investigations. They're still going on. But we have to clearly distinguish issues that are board-directed and issues that are clearly matters left up to the DA. This takes time. And this board is not going to make impetuous decisions when it comes to people's lives. Again, I just want to thank you and continue to trust that we will do our best to bring closure as soon as possible. And with that, I'd like to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Well said. Next, we have Ms. Nancy G. O'Kelly.
Yes. Well said, Joanne. I ditto everything Joanne said. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's wonderful, as always, to see everybody here, and especially as we move towards the holidays. At the last meeting, several of us talked about our tour of the new culinary arts and engineering academies, which were very impressive. But I wanted to make sure that we recognize a very influential person in achieving that goal, and that is Veronica Smith-Izard. I don't know if Veronica is here. I don't see her in this room. I don't know if she's in the back. If she's in the back, she needs to come up. But she was the lead grant writer for these academies. And without her expertise, and without her securing the grants, these academies probably would not have materialized the way they did, because the grant was a major part of the funding and planning of them. I don't think she's here, but I wanted to give her a shout out and tell her, "Job well done." I attended the joint CSBA meeting two weeks ago and learned a lot about the LCFF, or the Local Control Funding Formula, which is going to affect all the school districts in the state, and realized that the board and the district clearly have a lot of work to do to make sure that we meet the requirements for this new form of funding, and that the money is used to improve the academic achievement of all students. And I did want to ask when the board will hear the results of the FPM visitation. Are we going to be giving a report at the board meeting on that?
Yes, board, we can do presentations, but I did send you the report as a part of your board package.
But the public may want to...
Yes, we can do that in the schedule.
Okay. And just to address the findings and what actions we are taking to address those findings.
We'll put it on the schedule as the next agenda.
And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your turkey, and we will see you here in December.
Well, thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Well said. Next, we have our clerk of the board, Joseph W. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening to all. It's been about a four-and-a-half-year-old vision to get this streaming online. And I, again, want to thank the same names all over again. You hear these names a lot. And sometimes you don't hear them, but you see the faces. It's the same people doing the same hard work that they're called to. And I want to relay my thanks, my personal appreciation, for each one of them and for the work that they do to Ricardo Carlos, Clay Dickens, Saeda Jeffrey, David Cul, and John Steele. I listed them alphabetically, so no one would get bent out of shape. That's it. Thank you much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Martinez. Short and sweet. Next, we have our vice president of the board, Edgar Montes.
Thank you, board president, Mr. Ayala. Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches. I just would like to also piggyback on what everybody said here, because I truly do agree with everything that was said tonight. I might not always, but I do tonight. And nobody's happier, believe me, nobody's happier than me about the meetings being televised live via the internet. Because that means you don't just have to be, you don't just have to live in the Rialto Unified School District boundaries and watch it on Channel 3 on cable. But now you can be in Arizona. You can be anywhere in the United States, anywhere in the world, and watch the meetings via the internet. And some time ago, actually, we even had them uploaded for past previous meetings, for anyone who wants to see any past previous meetings. And I believe they go back a year or two. All of 2013's up, and maybe we can get some more of the previous ones uploaded on there for, you know, archives. And again, I'd like to thank again Mr. John Steele, the videographer, David Cul, the IT, Clay Dickinson, the maintenance, and Saeda, and Ricardo. Thank you again. I know this was a vision before I even got on this board, but believe me, nobody's happier than me. And then also, I just wanted to also thank Ms. Veronica Smith-Izard also for helping with the grant over at the Dolores Huerta Sister Chavez Center for the Culinary Arts and Engineering Building. When I first got elected on this board, grant writing was one of the things that I had brought up. And we tried a grant writer. Unfortunately, we tried a grant writer for six months for a certain amount of money, whether they got a grant or not. And it should have been contingent, it should have been commissioned, meaning that if they got something for the district, we'd pay them a commission for it. And I'm still interested in pushing for that, that we look into getting grant writers who do this professionally and give them commission if they get money for our school district, for our students. But we do, I think it's a gross neglect that we need to do a better job of recognizing our own people who are involved in writing these grants and getting these monies for our schools, like Mrs. Veronica Smith-Izard and Mr. Atkinson over at Eisenhower High School, who got the grant over there. So maybe, I'd like to suggest for Mr. Mohammed that we, for the next board meeting, or the one after, we schedule them a special amount of time to present them an award for their work, their hard work, and the reward of our district getting these grants because of them for both Mrs. Veronica Smith-Izard and Mr. Atkinson. The other thing I wanted to speak about was, you know, I just want to make it clear to our parents and ROTC and our students of ROTC, all of us up here support ROTC. The ROTC program is not being threatened. The ROTC program, as far as I know, is not being cut. You don't have to worry about ROTC. I know there's some rumors out there, but we all support ROTC up here, just as much as anybody else in the district. And we're going to continue to do the best that we can and make sure that we keep ROTC for as long as we can. I also did want to thank Mr. Dr. John Castellunas, our former board member, 20-year veteran board member of the school district, and, you know, somebody that was named, this building was named after. I want to thank him for coming to share his concerns with us. I just do want to point out to him that Mr. Islam being appointed, being left in charge was actually our superintendent's decision, and the board agreed with that. So I think it was one of the best decisions that our superintendent could have made was to leave Mr. Islam in charge in his place, you know, pending his return or not. So, by the way, you're doing an awesome job. I know it's not easy. Obviously, you had a year full from one of our respected former leaders in the city, and just want you to know. I think you're doing an awesome job, and I think these parents and people in the district think you're doing an awesome job. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And like Joanne said, we're all really working very hard to try to do the best that we can. So please have patience. I want to thank the parents who are here to let us know that you care, that you want us to work harder. So thank you for being here and letting us know how you feel about what's going on. And please continue to, stay tuned. If you can't make the board meeting, now you can log on online, and you can watch them there. So thank you again. And one last thing. Micah, I want to apologize to you as our student board member on this board. We really, I think, and believe me, if I become board president someday, I will make sure that you have more involvement in our board meeting process, because you are entitled, you are entitled to preferential votes, student board member preferential votes, and then also, you know, if you'd like to give your discussions and opinions on any topic, whether it's on or off the agenda, you can even propose, so that way you can get a stronger representation for your peers. If your peers can tell you what they want or what they don't like, and then you're their voice. Just like we're the voice of the residents, of the voters, you're the voice of your peers. And I hope that, whether it's me or somebody else, I hope you do get that opportunity. So thank you. Thank you again. Thank you, thank your family for being here. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice President Montes. I echo many of the things that were said tonight. I'd like to start with Micah. Just to let you know that if you come up with a resolution and you have something you want to say, by all means, you share it with us. You represent the students. That segment of that population is that three-legged stool. That is very, very important, very important. And I'll elaborate a little more about that in just a minute or two. So keep that in mind, anytime you feel that before a meeting you want to say something, you just let me know, and we can make it happen.
Mr. Ayala?
Please.
Did I just congratulate Micah on CBL championship and encourage everybody to go to Eisenhower's first CIF playoff game this Friday night?
Again, communication's very important. Silence usually doesn't progress, you don't get much progress by being silent. You have to speak up. And when you speak up, there's going to be differences. And you allow that process, and guess what? You get closer to the truth. So, and that's what we're looking for. We're here to monitor and bring fairness. And there's times that maybe we've looked a little aggressive, but this is a functional board. We all have our own styles. And it's a functional community, too. And I compliment you again. I heard it earlier, that you're here. You're carrying, you're filling up the seats. And so those are good things. To share with you some of the highlights that I've seen over last week or two, the DLEC meeting has been spectacular, very, very positive. We have representatives, parents coming to the meeting, sharing, listening, what can be done to help their kids. And hopefully, we can improve on those meetings. And how can we improve? One method would be, maybe bring a few students in there to talk to the parents, to explain to them, perhaps, what we could do to help them to get ready for like Common Core. And speaking about Common Core, these are new standards, okay? They're designed for deeper learning, critical thinking, and other skills to prepare them for college and careers. But there is a dilemma here, because the bar has moved up. It has not gone down. So while we're getting our kids ready for Common Core, okay, the colleges are also considering moving up their GPA requirements. This is a concern, because that's like, kind of like double dipping. That's kind of like a double whammy. Our kids, I think there needs to be some sensitivity. And so perhaps there were a couple of, not surveys, but when you write your name on a list, what do you call it? Help me out here, somebody? Not a survey, but a petition. Pardon me for not coming up the word. But there's some petitions being passed around. Perhaps we can take it to our local colleges and try to get a deeper understanding. I know they're short on money, okay? And probably to the tune of $380 million, okay? So we need to rally some support from the legislatures. I know this sounds like, oh, how are we going to do that? Well, we'll have to find some way of doing that. We do have representatives. Because we don't want the kids to pay that price. These are our colleges for our kids. And if kids come from out of state or some other place, then where do our kids go? Okay, so we need to stay on top of that. Together, we can make it happen. We are making it happen. We're going to bring resolutions. We'll work this out. And while we're talking about resolutions, you as an audience, you as committees, as you find special needs on a piece of paper, get something on the agenda, so this board can intelligently look at it and vote on it. We'll be happy to do that. And maybe, you may not win the first time, but take a look at it and see why. And then resubmit it, okay? We're here to help. Okay, with that in mind, you got Thanksgiving coming up. What is it, Thursday, November 28th?
7th.
On a Thursday, 28th, I believe. Okay.
The last Thursday in November.
I know if you have any extra turkeys, some of the local vendors are looking for support. I'll see what I can do to help find a couple, because there's always a family in need. I know personally, when I was in high school, we got a box delivered on our doorstep, and I'll never forget that. So, wow, okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The time is 9:05. Let's go home.